Need to order.
That was a bad one.
Lori Knessky.
Here.
Glenn DeGracy.
Here.
Scott Fishel.
Here.
Tom Haglund.
Here.
Jeff Harvey.
Here.
Can we stand for the Federal Legion? Federal Legion.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a consent agenda item for personnel. Oh, sorry. A motion to approve the items listed on the personnel consent agenda is recommended by the superintendent as A through D. A second. Discussion. Not Mr. Plack, who can you call the role?
Glenn DeGracy.
Aye.
Scott Fishel.
Aye.
Tom Haglund.
Aye.
Jeff Harvey.
Aye.
Lori Knessky.
Aye.
Motion carried. Hi. This is okay. And that brings us to our work session. So we'll go ahead and take a moment. I believe we're going to have a little bit of a presentation, probably walk through Loomouth anger, just so we can get back into reading reports. After that, the time for Q and A, and then we hope to come to agreement on some things that we need to focus on, and then think about what's the next steps to get this move in. So turn it over to these gentlemen. Do you want to introduce or?
Yeah, so we have Brian and Mike from Byaloski, who did these facility condition assessments. Do you want to give a little introduction yourselves and then kind of take us through the Loomouth report, just kind of what to look at, how that applies to other reports, and then we'll open up to questions and discussion.
Thank you, Gary. So as you mentioned, I'm Brian May, Mike Houston from Byaloski Cleveland. So this summer, we, along with some of our colleagues, assessed seven of the facilities here at Riverside. East Buckeye Elementary, Melrose Ridge Elementary, Loomouth Middle, JRW Middle School, Riverside High School, the Riverside Bus Garage, and Riverside Fieldhouse. Purpose of which was kind of threefold. Determine the condition of the major architectural, structural, M E P systems. Document deficiencies identified by the district or discovered during these investigations and prioritize critical needs to assist in planning phase repairs. So just want to pull up a couple of slides and hopefully these are somewhat familiar like making.
I do believe that at some point we plan on posting these assessments right to our website.
They, yes, we will get them up as soon as we can. They are rather large.
We'll leave you there up.
Yes. So each of these assessments for each of the facilities took about a day to complete in general. The Riverside campus here was a little bit more based on the size of the facilities. You know, the way we observed this was onsite, non-destructive visual inspection. So meaning we didn't tear anything off the walls or push any ceiling tiles out of the way. It was all just observations based on the condition as it is. We did get up onto all of the roofs. We did go peek into some of the crawl spaces. I think one of our truck engineers actually did crawl around a little bit down there, but it was really kind of poking our heads down, taking some pictures in those concealed spaces. But we did go through every other room in these facilities and walked around the exterior. The site itself and site access was not included in these reports. It was really the building from the envelope in that we were focused on. So we wanted to run through the Loomouth Middle School assessment just to kind of describe the way it was formatted and how we addressed it, and then really looking at the recommendations for those and how those were organized, and a cost, opinion of probable cost matrix. And then as you see later on, grouping those based on priority levels and efficiencies into potential projects. And this is consistent with all seven of the reports that we did. So Loomouth Middle.
The gentleman from Berber and Hoffman, what's his expertise?
He's a structural engineer.
Thank you.
So from Byaloski, it was myself, Paul Rosetti, architects, Mike Houston, Jamie Clayton, electrical and mechanical engineers.
Thank you.
So, you know, the kind of setting the stage of the report, a cover page, again, sort of describing the purpose of the assessment, which we just discussed here, you know, indicating that we relied on existing drawings when they were available. We did get a whole bunch from Rich and his team to kind of go through and supplement our onsite investigations and there were things that we could dig in a little bit more in depth. Just a quick little blurb about each of the facilities, in this case Loomouth, and then an executive summary on the findings of each architectural, structural, mechanical, plumbing...
And electrical.
Electrical, right. So that was just sort of a high level executive summary, sort of separate tone of what you would look at throughout these reports. So then we go into great, much greater detail, starting with the architectural and the shell, i.e. the exterior walls. So again, you know, breaking that down, in this case, A would be walls and chimneys. Again, just in narrative form, describing the observations in the existing systems as they appeared during the observation. We did then take, we photo documented a lot and tied each of these pictures and figures with a description that tied to the narrative up above, as well as what you see here, there's a lot of photographic evidence of these things, in this particular case, pointing out deficiencies if it was tuck point of masonry, masonry that had been cleaned or cracked, inside exterior walls that showed evidence of structural cracking. You know, shift and damaged masonry, damaged soffits. Again, some cracking of the masonry, some discoloration. Some of the sealant joints that were deteriorating. You know, discoloration at discover boxes. So as you can see, there was a significant amount of photo documentation that was done on these. So afterwards, yeah. So then, in terms of the recommendations, and these are not organized in any particular priority level, these are just based on, here are the observations that we found and recommendations based upon those. So these are in, again, no particular order of priority. They're just alpha and mercurial per, you know, the chimneys and walls. But as an example, you know, we'd say, okay, perform additional investigation of seeing the cracking inside the gymnasium. You know, there's a significant crack. It warrants some more in-depth structural investigation.
Should I ask questions now or should I wait?
Can I? It doesn't matter to us, however.
Do you want to wait until after the?
Well, I just. You could remember them all.
Right, so just the C M U, that's a concrete masonry unit. So what, is that just a wall? Is it a prefab? What does that actually mean?
It means it's a exterior wall built out of reinforced concrete masonry units. You know, that is, in this case, it's a bearing wall to the gymnasium rafters.
Okay. So, but it's not a prefab. It is a, it was a individually.
Yeah, it was a lay block wall.
Okay. Do you have a question to?
No.
Okay.
So again, you know, each of those, you know, were observations that we pointed out that warranted noting remediation.
And then we later put a cost to, you'll see in the correct.
So, you know, then we go on to foundations. Again, these are sort of real, and these integrated comments from the structural engineer as well. And again, recommendations based on that. As you can see, some sections have a lot more colors, structured floors and roofs. So just a way to kind of break it down by system components. You know, pointing out cracking in the floor finish that is evidence of a, you know, a crack in the floor slab itself. Roofing. So here, you know, we did get on all of the roofs as we could. I think there were a couple of low roofs or higher roofs that were inaccessible, but we did photo document that to the rest of our roof, from the adjacent roofs or from the ground. So you can see here, we noted, you know, patches of roofing that are bare from the ballast, some natural vegetation that's occurring on the roofscapes. I don't think it's pertinent to Loomouth, but there were some instances where mechanical equipment was close to the edge of the roof, which is not necessarily safe condition. Windows is the next section. So again, noting any damaged, damage doors or windows, any signs of rust or corrosion. In some cases, missing structural lintels, unsupported masonry over some of these buildings. In some instances, there was some missing molding caps.
Now, did you say there were missing lintels? Never installed?
No, I would say nonexistent lintels.
Okay. Thank you.
Good clarification. And again, you know, recommendations, exterior doors, separating that from windows, just so they could be organized in a more valid manner. In this case, we did include the site loading dock, although it is sort of a site component, but we felt that that was worth describing since it did touch components of the building. And in this case, there were several observations that would require remediation. But in general, it did not include sidewalks, parking lots, athletic fields, things of that nature, nor the modular classrooms, I should point out for some of the elementary schools.
Really what you're noting are a few of the items that were outside of the envelope.
Correct. Then in the next section, outside of the exterior walls, were code issues. And those were broken into life safety. As an example, fire suppression systems, exit sign locations, fire extinguisher locations, stair handrails. The next section under the code would be accessibility, because that really had to deal with primarily restroom facilities, drinking mountains. As you can see here, you know, some of this, some of the observations fell into a couple of different categories. For instance, the restrooms were all under code, but it might also fall under the plumbing systems when we get there. But that was accounted for in the cost matrix, so there is no double difference, if you will, in that particular building.
Yeah, as you can see on some of these photographs we included to it, not everyone is meant to document efficiency. Some are just show typical conditions throughout the building.
Hazardous materials. So this was not necessarily included in our assessment. We do know that the school district did have in 2021 and 2022, a series of asbestos hazardous emergency response act reports generated by the E A group. We wanted to document this in that report and give reference to it, so that could be indicated as a recommendation and something to address in the future. The next section had to deal with the interior finishes, ceilings. So that was a mix in many of these facilities from a laying A C T ceiling, a plaster ceiling, in some, some instances, gypsum board ceiling. And just noting there any deficiencies we found with color stains, flaking of the plaster, et cetera. Interior walls, so these would be, obviously they're non-exterior walls, but there are a series of, you know, C M U walls in the interior of a lot of these buildings, some gypsum board and plaster walls as well. The flooring. So in a lot of cases, it was a vinyl tile terrazzo in a lot of the common areas, some ceramic tile in some of the restrooms, newer restrooms. And again, just kind of pointing out some typical conditions, and then also, you know, where noticeable cracks or damage D C T or any flooring material occurred. I should say some also has the sealed concrete or athletic flooring if they were mentioned as things. Also looked at doors and frames. Primarily, these were a lot of the classroom doors and frames, but also closets, restroom doors, really any other interior door. Toilet partitions. For each of the restroom types. Recommendations associated with, excuse me, listen.
Want to take over for a second? Yeah. Where were we? You might keep scrolling through here, Brian. Then also the chemistry and millwork. Here looking at the built-ins and millwork throughout the, most of the classroom spaces and some of the office spaces. Through. And you see, you know, including the lockers, some of the science classrooms as well. Loose furnishing, so desks, chairs, you know, things of that nature that.
This also included the teacher stations as well, not necessarily just the classrooms. Also library furniture or any other common areas.
And then, good news, engineering systems, starting with mechanical. So we kind of looked at breaking out the systems. You look from overlap, started with heating. We had a lot of areas that are heating only and a lot of standalone heating equipment. So this would be your central plants, your, you know, a lot of boilers, you know, individual unit heaters, unit ventilators. And you'll see if you scroll through, you know, some of these pictures in the mechanical rooms, in the classrooms, heating equipment, you know, in the gymnasium as well. Again, with recommendations related to the equipment and some more specifics on what we think, you know, when they need to be replaced, whether a system might be under consideration as well. Then we get into air conditioning and ventilation. So these, again, a lot of times your standalone systems, not as many, not, most of the schools or buildings weren't fully air conditioned. So talking about, you know, what we saw, and also some recommendations for going forward if the goal would be to fully air condition the building, especially looking at ventilation. We know that's a very critical piece. We're all aware here. And then last is the mechanical side would be the exhaust systems. So again, standalone equipment, mostly on the rooftops for the restroom, for dinner, that exhaust for fume hoods and the science rooms. And some of the pictures, you know, the cooking in the kitchen, the kitchen hoods, fume hoods. Then came plumbing, where we got broke these up into the district system, started with domestic water system. So this would be your potable water, cold water, your heating hot water, hot water heaters throughout the facilities. Also ties into any wet sprinkler and fire protection systems that may or may not be in the buildings, and recommendations for whatever you should add if we are missing wet fire protection systems for those systems. The sanitary and storm system, so for this one, a little more general, because we didn't do any, there's always what you can do with sanitary or storm, looking at roof drains, talking with building staff to understand conditions that they've seen, you know, have they seen issues with backing up, clogging, drainage problems, to kind of bring their input into the report, so that's here in a more formalized way. Looking at kitchen, looking at roof drains, the plumbing fixtures. So, you know, going through, looking at what the typical plumbing fixtures are, what we've seen, are we looking at low flow fixtures, wireless fixtures in the classroom and the restrooms, et cetera. And then site utilities, and again, this, this one was more about what size do we see coming in the building from drawings from in there? What items have we heard from the staff in terms of how the site totally performed? And Loomouth is a good example, because Loomouth has the onsite with our treatment. So just documenting there that that's what's serving the building, and that's not as hard as what we did do, any assessment of the treatment facility itself. The electrical, starting with the service equipment, so panels, train formers in the building, the distribution. So this is where we're going more into the building, all the way down to receptacle, the floor boxes within the spaces and classrooms. Then emergency lighting, so we separated us a little bit emergency and standard lighting. That's, you know, obviously emergency lighting is one of our critical features, so we wanted to really break that out to make sure we could highlight any deficiencies we saw there, which are a lot more critical. Same for fire alarm system, kind of the same thing, we wanted to highlight any issue we saw there. Then more generally, the lighting, lighting systems, so looking at lighting controls, light fixtures, you know, lighting levels, we did take measurements through. We did look at some of the set lighting as well, that's one of those areas where we kind of get outside the building a little bit.
It was also about noting what type of light fixture lamps were there.
Yeah.
LED versus fluorescent versus. A little pressure sodium.
Yeah, yeah, high pressure, yeah, exactly. And then security systems, so looking at, you know, key fob, door hardware, and the like, security cameras, and then technology, infrastructure.
So after all of that, I realize that was a lot to improve very, very quickly. Again, at the end of the report, sort of summarizing, very similar to the executive summary, just a recap of, you know, what each of those high level areas that were broken down, just summarize it that. And then, in terms of now noting, noting that we listed a lot of different recommendations for each of those sections, how those would be prioritized. And really, the guidance for that was actually given to us by the district to really indicate five different priority levels. One, which would be critical conditions or items that would really want to be immediately addressed. The second was potentially critical conditions, so kind of one step below that, deteriorating conditions, functional improvements or improved aesthetics, and then grandfathered code or standard conditions that might not necessarily be required, but it might be a good idea for consideration. So at that, I'm going to slip over the second PDF, which is actually the cost matrix. So what this began to do was to take each of those individual recommendations that you saw in the report, again, kind of restated it here in a matrix or tabular form. Certain items really required it to be considered an allowance. Other items, we were able to identify a certain either lineal foot or quantity that was identified, which then the cost estimator, which was a party cost estimator, was able to look at those and then come up with an associated value. So in this condition, as an example, A 1.04, remove and replace approximately 20 lineal feet of spalling brick, accept masonry, about 50 linear feet of base brick, masonry around the entire perimeter. So as we identified that as party level number two, the estimator was able to attribute a value to that.
Yeah, the goal is really to give, these are estimates, these are, you know, perfectly encapsulated exactly how much we're dealing with, but to get a more accurate cost estimate at this early stage versus just saying, we're having issue, and not saying how much or how advised right it is.
So I have a question. When you say there's an allowance, how do they determine, how do they determine the cost value if you're giving an allowance based on size, space, like what?
Yeah, it's kind of based on their experience. So in the A 1.01 as an example, so that was, okay, there's cracking on the inside of the gymnasium, requires further investigation. You have a pretty good sense, okay, that's about a $3,000 cost for a more in-depth structural analysis of that particular building. So it is based on their historical data, if you will.
But that's not, then you're saying that that's not really a cost estimate on what it would take to repair or replace or fix.
Not to repair it, but to better understand the deficiency in that particular case.
Yeah, you'll see like a lot of allowances are on things like, like that, where it is maybe more additional information that needs to be done, you know, where it's more specific to that additional investigation, at least in that one, in some of these.
So it may be someplace where you need to get into the wall or get into.
Exactly, some more additional demolition to really understand the cause.
Now, since A 1.01 is critical, can we assume that you just, it was an allowance to do it, but there's probably something going on there that you're kind of saying, hey, this probably needs to address.
Correct.
Sooner rather than later.
Correct.
Okay.
So in the first, we provided two matrix. The first matrix was simply all of the recommendations, again, in numerical, alphanumeric order, but with a party level of cost associated with it. So in the case of Loomouth, let me just zoom out for a second.
I guess the reason I ask that is because if we're going to look at cost, then that's some, it's really not the cost yet.
I think that in some cases, I think in others, let's give another allowance example. So as an example, comprehensively clean and seal all masonry exterior walls. So this was an allowance probably because we didn't have great documentation of the actual square footage of the Loomouth, all of the exterior walls. But the estimator was able to look at the documents, look at the photographs and say, okay, this should be a value of, of. You know, and this is a rather large number, you know, 489,000 because of the size of the building. I don't know if that answered your question.
I guess it does. I mean, there's just, just going to be in order to assess costing of some of the critical items or before we know how much, what we have to do and how much we want to spend and how much we can, how many dollars we can dedicate, we're going to have to do some of that.
Yeah, I would say there's, there's few, there's a few, not a lot, that were required additional investigations. I think some of those other ones, like cleaning of the masonry, that's a pretty good number in terms of a general opinion of what that would cost. You know, obviously, this is good out, you know, if that is something that would be desired, you know, it could be competitively bid, it might be less than what that opinion might be.
Probably the difference again is whether you have to get in to kind of finally assess it, right? You have to get into the wall to assess it, or get underneath the floor to assess it. That's going to make the difference, right?
It could.
Okay.
Well, just to be clear on that, on the exterior staining and spalling of bricks, you would never need to get inside the wall to.
Well, correct. It depends on, it depends on the recommendation.
Right. The one in the gymnasium, they want a closer look at on the exterior walls, we wouldn't need to enter the wall. Just want to be clear on that.
So, so just to follow up on the crack in the Loomouth gymnasium, is that on a outward facing wall, should be, or is it on an interior wall?
That would move you on an exterior wall.
Okay.
Since it fell under the exterior wall section of the report.
Okay. And, and I just want to ask that question. Go ahead.
Well, the picture was on the inside of the gymnasium.
Right.
It was an exterior wall.
Right, that's my question. Yeah, right.
So does that, so there's the money to explore, but then is the money to fix it also in this kind of like an estimate or an allotment for repairs after that?
In that particular case, it would, it is not.
Okay.
Only because it's not definable at this moment.
Right, so it's go look at it and then assume that if it's $3,000 to look at it, you're looking at a whole lot more to correct it.
Potentially. I mean, it also could be, you know, it's just a settlement crack that is easily limited.
Okay.
So at the, at the total.
Can I add to that? And you can offer an opinion correction or whatever you want to that. Normally, when you have a wall separating like that, normally it's a matter of tuck point. Usually you don't need any additional shoring up of the wall.
It would be unlikely that you would.
Thank you.
So each of those priority levels and in each of those columns come down to a total per priority level. Then there's some added components to that. So non-construction cost has a, in this case, 12%. A design contingency, 10%. So that's then sub totaled, and then a construction contingency. So these are all done to build in unknowns at some points, build in, you know, construction or contractor overhead costs.
Yeah, some soft costs. Yeah, some soft costs as well.
So then 12% include like architect fees, surveys.
It would, yeah.
Correct.
So these are, these numbers were all based on a summer of 2024 calendar year. So those were, you know, knowing that the work probably wouldn't happen today, but didn't want to escalate it out two, three years down the road. So that was a good benchmark to use, you know, as a. Was there any inflation factor as well in that? Only to 2024. Right, but there, there was. There wasn't 2023 numbers projected in 2024 was actually our best, your best, estimator's best guess at inflation as well. Exactly. So in this case, you know, if all of those individual recommendations were taken, you know, the total probable cost is about $20 million. So from that, what we did is then we kind of jumped back and said, okay, now we have all of this whole litany of items. Can it be grouped into, you know, quote unquote, projects to kind of see, you know, if we did pieces and parts, how it would be digested perhaps? So we looked at that and further separated it into, I guess what we're calling these as kind of project categories. So roofs, building exterior walls, interior improvements, maintenance items, energy efficiency, environmental.
And these are really grouping of recommendations that kind of go together where, you know, maybe we're starting with some critical item, when you're doing those, it makes sense at the same time to do these other recommendations that aren't as critical because you're going to have mobilization for a certain contractor that can keep you on or, you know, for whatever reason while you're there, gives you opportunity to get to something else that you need to get to, trying to group those in a way that makes the most sense that we're talking about working with, I'm struck the team. And when we get to the cost of each of these, as you'll, you'll see, the, the, some of them are still the sum of all the individual recommendations. We didn't estimate each individual project as its own piece apart, but the implication would be because of some of the grouping, because of some of the mobilization issues, that you would get a better price kind of bundling together potentially. But that's not reflected in the report at this point, so just keep that in mind as you're.
Right, so as an example, you know, we said, okay, project number one would be under building exterior walls, but it's really the masonry for that. So that could be separated out as its own sort of mini project, if you will. And then what we did is we went back to the matrix. Working here, so we grouped all of those individual recommendations. In this case, some of them were side by side that you can see, you know, it jumps from, you know, A 1.10, sorry, 1.11 to 1.22. So this kind of grouped them all together. And we numbered the projects based on the priority levels. So the critical, if there was a critical item in there, you know, that made it gravitate to a higher project number. As you see though, there are lesser items, priority level items associated with that project. But again, thus, as Mike had mentioned, there's some synergies there or efficiencies that made sense, you know, to group them together.
Yeah, we, we tried to keep these from getting too big so you didn't have, you know, just two projects, you know, so there's a lot of projects. You could also decide why group projects, you could do one and two at the same time or, or more. But we wanted to do kind of more discrete costs where we saw it making sense to group items together.
Yeah, so we, you know, gone through there. I think in this case, let's see how many projects we have. For Lammuth, I think we identified 27 potential projects.
And you can see, we also gave kind of a, a general suggested timeline that went along with these. So you can see kind of where there's some jumps from, you know, immediate, zero to two years, two to five years, five to 10 years.
And those really correlated with, you know, if there was immediate priority line item within that project, you know, that was an immediate timeframe. If it happened to be, you know, one that was maybe a functional improvement, you know, that's a five to 10 years down the road. So in essence, that's sort of the way all of these reports have been formatted in our approach to them. And we'll say, you know, from a, I know folks have had a OFCC assessment done a couple of years prior to this, and just kind of talking about some of the differences between an assessment of this style versus the OFCC. And I think the biggest difference is that because we had a third-party cost estimator looking at this and working with the team, we were able to get a little bit more granular than an OFCC assessment where you're really taking an observation and trying to fit it in a pre-described box that OFCC sort of defines. So this was a little bit more flexible in identifying smaller, maybe remediation recommendations that could be.
Yeah, we tried to, where we could, do a little more specific recommendations as well. For example, on some of the system sides, rather than just say, you know, replace the system or, you know, provide air conditioning and try to get in and explain more, you know, this is the type of system we think would make sense. This is approximate size, we think, based on past experience. That's obviously at a very high level, but to give the estimator some more to go on than just provide air conditioning, you know, provide this type of system and this size of system, trying to do a better number to it.
So perhaps a tangent, but perhaps useful for, for the audience who might be watching this in the future. We obviously went through a bidding process and, and it worked out that you, Bioloski, were recommended for, you know, you won the contract. But could you just, to, to give people at home a little bit of sense of your background and experience, can you just talk about Bioloski's and the work you've done and, and the, you know, the credibility you bring to the, the table as you have done your assessment? Sure. So Bioloski has been around since 1951, I believe. Second now, almost third generation architectural firm that is in-house, VP engineers. Our portfolio is rather large. We do just about everything but healthcare facilities, so ranging from single-family homes, you know, to mixed-use developments. From the assessment side, you know, we have done a tremendous amount of assessments throughout the region. Most recently, with some private schools on the east side, Puxman's Rocky, Beaumont. We've done a lot of assessments for the metro parks, through the metro parks, the Ossinone, you know, the public libraries, some big public library as well.
Assessment, master planning pieces. So we, we bring the assessment piece, we have a lot of experience working as well in design on existing buildings, renovations, those new. So we, we come at this both from an assessment piece, but also from a design piece and experience on, you know, carrying out these types of projects that we're, that we're talking about here.
What are some of the companies, corporations that carry out the work?
In terms of.
So is Bioloski looking to carry out the work or is this an assessment and things put out to bid? So normally, when, when you put things out, who are the companies that normally do the work?
I would say for public schools, architecture engineering companies, there's a few that kind of go towards the top of the list, GPD, then Design, I'm sure there's a couple others. You know, we, I, Bioloski itself, we haven't done too many public school facilities. We've done a lot of private schools, but no, no real public district work.
Beaumont the most recent?
Uh, Beaumont, Puxman's Rocky, Mandel Jewish Day School.
Yeah, and for example, for Beaumont, we just probably, I think in, in 2020, we did assessment for their campus, started with the assessment piece, moved to a master planning exercise with them, very involved with the school, and then moved on to doing the design work for the first phase of the master planning and now moving into the second phase coming up, so.
Can I ask a question? Like, like putting all this stuff together, and you got 27 projects and, and we have seven, seven buildings that you looked at and ranking things in priority status on a combined basis and moving us from this work now to master planning because that's, I think, where, where our big issue is, like, what's the master plan going to look like, right? When we have seven buildings? Because I think, Gary, if I'm not mistaken, you shared all of these with people via Google Doc, right? So everybody's had an opportunity to look at these. I know that in buildings and grounds, we reviewed one in depth, the first one that you guys had, had completed. And now taking this, like, how do we get to the master plan portion? Right? And saying, hey, over seven buildings, what are the, what are the biggest critical areas over these? Like, what's the recommendation for us?
Well, I think from, it's a good question and it's kind of one that's difficult to unpack completely.
Right.
You know, obviously, I think all of the recommendations that were identified as an immediate or critical component, you know, should be addressed, you know, and that might sway, you know, how those project, you know, suggested projects were put together, you know, based on what cost is available, you know, when you look at it from seven different facilities. So that might alter, you know, some of the project recommendations. Well, you know, maybe you don't take this component out because there's other higher priority items that need to be addressed at a different facility. But I think this does give you the, the roadmap, you know, to have those conversations.
Yeah, kind of a base level, now you know, if you're dealing with that, you choose the schools. And then if the, the issue becomes looking at a bigger picture on how we prioritize between these facilities and those pieces, then I think that's probably a bigger master plan exercise that you want to find a partner to work with that can go through it, can work with you as a district, work with your stakeholders to really identify what are the critical pieces. Because that's where we can't, at this level, yet, get to that point because it's hard for us to know, you know, what, what are your pain points until we start, you know, us or whoever wins the job, really work with you guys closely and then start to figure that out.
You're talking about getting more into the minutia piece by piece?
Yeah, yeah, and, and you know, it's, you know, it's, when we're just looking at the facility to try to get that base level and hear the recommendations, that's kind of straightforward. When you're getting into, you know, is it more critical at this middle school or this elementary, which one is, is more important to us as a district, to our constituents? You know, that takes a little more, after a little more community engagement, which is something that we've done on, through our master planning exercises in the past. We try to get involvement from the community, help us, you know, discover more than anything what the priorities need to be, you know, on it.
And I'm curious about, right, I'm curious about that process, like what, how did you guys, how did you guys do that? Right, right, there's, I think that's the critical piece for us is how do we move forward from this to that master plan?
So let me, so let me see, so I, there's, if I could, and this may, may or may not help your, your answer, but I think there's two level of prioritizations. There's one at the building level, right, which, which is nicely laid out in the, in the report that we have. But then it's, I think it's, it's a board decision with, with input from, from many people, right, many people in this room, to figure out what the prioritization is across the, the, the different buildings, right? We've only got so many number of dollars that we, at this point, can apply. And so we need to figure out how best to distribute those, those dollars. And, and that, that is going to be the key. I mean, looking at enduring buildings, the ones that are going to be for sure, you know, the campus would be, from my perspective, would be a priority. Obviously, Lammuth is definitively going to be part of our future as well, that would be a second priority. But, but that, to me, as I look at the, the landscape, that would be how we would, we have X number of dollars, we have the priorities overall, and then we are able to take the different elements of the, of the other buildings and, and apply money as we can to that. But I, I do think it's, it's two levels of prioritization.
Yeah, and part of the, tonight, what we'd like to discuss is making sure we understand kind of some agreement on what our pain points are and we will, we talked about bringing in the community to also have some discussions and make sure they agree with us kind of on those pain points and how we move forward, like helping make that plan. So to your point, like, what facilities are, do we want, what are some more other pain points? Because just to make sure our assumptions are right, but this does not include changing spaces, for instance. So if we need larger classrooms, it does not include that. It does not include the creation of new spaces if we need new space.
Correct.
Stuff like that.
As an example, I think it was Buckeye and Melridge that had modular classrooms. So that was noted, but without knowing really what the anticipated enrollment, you know, is that steady, is it increase, decrease? You know, I think there's a lot of other variables there that could come into play with that as well.
For example, Mel, well, Buckeye was 9.1 million, did all the recommendations. We still have six classrooms, you know, in the trailer, if you spent 9.1 million, did all the recommendations. So if you're talking about adding on six classrooms and doing that, does that make sense? You know, those are the discussions we have.
And, and if I'm reading your project list correctly, for Lammuth specifically, I saw in the, the recommendations that you recommend putting, putting in air conditioning across the building, but I don't see that in a list in a specific project number, so that would be an additional cost. Is that, is that how I'm reading this right or am I missing it somewhere within the, within the matrix? I guess that's one of my questions because I think, you know, one of the things we talked about is making sure that, you know, that is a, you know, all of our classrooms kind of see, feel, look and feel, to have, have those same kind of similarities to it.
Do you feel like how we address that?
Um, yeah, I think we do, I believe we do have a number in there and maybe it's, or start from here on, before we get to the product level and we get to cross preference it. So, I remember, so it's a, Lammuth is a little bit of a unique facility because it has, it has a lot more air conditioning than something like, say, Buckeye or some of the other ones. So what we had, one of our recommendations were here is we have, there's one large air handler that handles the library and the admin, that's in pretty good shape, that it just needs to tune out. There's another one that does kind of music area that probably needs replacing, that's, that would be here in M 2.03. There's also an RTU kind of that side, that's 2.04. And then there's a couple more here, we get into these 2.05 through 07 with different systems around the building, with its classroom wing. And, and these are kind of, you know, these, we wanted, like I said, we wanted to give more precise estimates, so we wanted to see this is where we think would be the most sense for a system, because you have to go with these, where we recommended, you know, say, a very little current system. This is something that's being used a lot more for facilities like this because it's a lot easier to retrofit into it. Lots of schools are doing that and kind of addresses cooling and ventilation, kind of two separate components that work together. So that's where we, you know, and you can see if you look to the, the third column here, you know, just enough, that rough estimate, this is how much, you know, a 40 ton for here, a 30 ton from here, you know, obviously, if you have a project, you do more detailed counts, but based on past experience, what we've done, that's kind of where we think that's a good number to start at pricing up.
I also wanted to mention, and I think we included this in the Buckeye report, but looking back at the others, I think this may have failed to be, to have been put on the matrix, but just as a comparison, you know, as for new construction for a school facility, you're looking at probably $400 a square foot is a good sort of metric. So when you look at that compared to the cost, you know, of how the recommendations are planned out across the other buildings, you can kind of compare what that might be. You know, obviously, you know, if you're adding on additional classrooms, that's a differentiating factor, but just as a good comparison.
Yeah, I think the highest cost per work was based on all the recommendations, was the Buckeye, it was like about $320, that's a point of reference.
Do you think at this point, to go through, and we mentioned minutia, getting through in all the details, do you think it's helpful to have someone like an owner's representative sit down and walk through to help categorize and itemize someone who's had experience actually executing the work?
Yeah, I think it could be that, it could be a contractor, like a construction manager.
Some kind of.
Someone of that.
Contract, contractor knowledge.
Yeah.
Who's executed.
I would agree.
Not only executing the work, but execute getting the bids.
Exactly.
And choosing, because you got to vet your contractors.
Yeah.
And the subcontractors.
Yeah, what we found on, on a lot of our projects, school or not, is a lot of them are trying to identify the construction manager early, putting out the bids, they're selecting a CM during design on Fridays or earlier, so that, you know, they can get that feedback, you know, on, this is going to be a long lead item, this is, you know, these type of things. This system is going to be more cost effective than this system. To kind of, you know, help guide almost a design assist approach early on, you know.
And that's the, you know, the, the key thing, just to drive home a point that already has been brought out, but just to really drive it home, there's, there are a lot of things that need to be done, but it's phased. You had a 10-year horizon on many of the projects you had. This is a, this is not going to be done in two years, three years, five years. This is a, a long term, and the master plan obviously is very critical to ensuring that from board to board, because we obviously have elections along the way, that we have a consistent plan that we're executing across different generations of boards to, to keep the district on course and speed to that, that final ultimate state that we wanted to get to. to, to keep the district on course and speed to that, that final ultimate state that we wanted to get to.
Do we have anywhere that we combine all of these tables for all the schools and show the reds and the, yeah, do you know what I mean?
Yeah, if you remember back, I actually, I turned this off, or turned this off for the meeting. Went back in October, I kind of just, a quick, very quick summary of all the priorities of every school. What was the total priority one, priority two?
Right.
I think I looked at, if we just did all the priority one and two items, it was about 45 million across all those facilities. And obviously, you know, things like, you know, did all the transportation garage, it was up 1.8 million. There's no, we never spent 1.8 million dollars on our transportation garage. So there's things like that, that wouldn't make sense, or even, you know, 2.2 million on a field house. It needs some work, but it doesn't need that much. So even if you take those things out, it's still, that was all priorities. But just looking at priorities one and two, we were at 45 million, and even if you took out the field house, transportation garage, it only drops to being 1.3 million, if I did my math right, you know, so you're still, we have a lot more needs than we do for, than we have funding right now. So that's, that's the other piece too. And I guess in, in your experience, you know, does it make sense to, on some of these facilities, to do all these renovations? Or does it make sense to do a new construction? You know, that's, you know, the OFCC uses the, the two-thirds model, where if the cost of, where they exceeds two-thirds of the cost of building new, they recommend you build new. Is that a good model to follow?
I think it's, I think it's a logical model. Um, you know, it's, it's not a one-size-fits-all approach sometimes. Um, you know, I'll go back to sort of the Buckeye comment, you know, I think understanding enrollment projections is kind of important as well, and how that factors into everything. So then you can say, okay, a building of this size, you can utilize it to the best of its ability and.
And our enrollment is projected to stay where it is or increase, because we have a lot of development in this community. So, you know, Buckeye with six modular classrooms, that's not going to go away due to declining enrollment.
Yeah, and then, and there's, there's a lot that goes into it, you have to look at holistically too, because it can also deal with, is there, do we combine facilities, do we not? You know, is it easier to build a bigger school that handles more students and mobilize once, is it, is it not? So there's, there's a lot of intricacies that can go into that thinking.
How much is it per square foot? Let's say, let's say we removed the modulators and built new classrooms, how much per square foot?
It would be that 400.
400 is accurate.
Yeah.
So it doesn't matter if you're doing a classroom or if you're doing six?
It doesn't really, I mean, it's, it's, it's a good round number to apply.
Yeah, I mean, it'll be different, but talking with our SM, made a partner, that's what they follow is a good number for you guys to consider, think about.
And the average sized classroom today?
I don't know, it, it really varies, it's, it's so hard to say if you're talking about a renovated class, you know.
It's, can it be around 900? Well, I was going to say, when we did our new schools, they were around 900.
Yeah, I would think that's, that sounds right to me.
And you had the hallways and, you know, you can't afford them for those.
Right, so we're now at $400 a square foot, or I think we're at $323 a square foot when we, we're doing the assessment of this building to replace it. So it's already gone up 70 dollars a square foot, it's based on my reflection in the past two years, so.
I would say the, the current construction climate has been pretty volatile over the last few years. So there's a chance it could come down potentially.
Yeah, when we were previously discussing build or renovate, the idea of what did the inflation look like? It's always a moving target, and how do you know what it is? But unfortunately, you go back three years and, and this three-year timeframe's been pretty brutal.
Yeah.
And you couple that with supply chain issues, and wow, you know, you're rolling the dice sometimes. So now, as that's starting to maybe level out a little bit, supply chain issues mostly have gone away, although I will say in my industry, I'm in the roofing, and are starting to show up again. And, um, so we just don't know. Yeah, that's, it's, it's, it's difficult. So obviously, we're trying to make the best decision with the information we have.
I also think we have to consider the property that we have, right? So adding six classrooms, and I don't know the answer to this, I'm just saying, you know, to add six classrooms to Buckeye, is there enough room on that piece of land? I don't know.
I would say when, what we observe is there's a lot of land at a lot of your facilities. You know, some of it's wooden, you know, some of it's long, maybe to the site, but I think there's options there for sure.
I think that is one of the rather rich in, is we have spares at a lot of our facilities, which is nice.
Melridge looks like they lost all of it, but it's all.
It's all on the cliff.
Once you get off the party line, it just drops off, so it's not a good site, blockout classrooms.
That's what we were talking about, if you were to build new, it's a difficult piece of property. Okay, so magical question. If your life depended on it, right? Um, and, and you were given the dictate that, and I know part of it, Mr. Platko said maybe we pull this, pull that up. Forget about pulling things out. In a global sense, if you were given the dictate and said, okay, you have to execute this with 70% of the dollars, how would you go about it?
70% of what dollars?
The global dollars. So you have 98 million here? So let's just say, uh, let's say it's $100 million and we're doing everything. And you, and you were told, okay, you've got 70 million to work with, how would you execute this program? If your life depended on it?
So, can I just ask a question? Why would we even ask that? Because we don't know how much money we have. That's not a, like.
I'm asking a question, I'd just like to have the answer. Hypothetical.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think that how you would address that hypothetically, uh, would really start looking at these lower priority items and how those can be peeled away. As an example, furnishings, right? Furnishings are really an aesthetic item. Um, you know, they, overall, they were in pretty fair, good to fair condition throughout the school, but they were mismatched. You know, they, they did not match, they were different from one's score into the next. But, you know, that's probably not the highest priority than fixing the windows or putting the air conditioning. So I think you would look for opportunities such as that to reduce the overall cost.
So really, you're saying what's practical may be either move that out or delay it a little bit more.
Correct.
And do the more critical and, and required functional items.
Yeah, I think there'd be some, definitely some phasing, and I think you'd also have to look at, you know, is there a way to do it where we do a bigger chunk, the bigger chunks we do, where we can take advantage of a lot of that efficiencies?
Build in some effectiveness and efficiency, right, save some money.
I think some of the challenges with those, and I think one thing to be taken to account is that community input, community aspect of, of these projects, because I know one of the ones, that most of them that are in the lower priorities, because they're functional, but we hear about a lot are our restrooms and adding partitions and all that. And there's a lot of money that's into a restroom partition project, which I think if we talked to a lot of community members, they would say this is a, this is a critical component, but in terms of functionality, our restrooms are functional. I don't know, I mean, I think that's the, the fair definition, I don't know if I would go any better than that. So I think in terms of how we address this, that visioning piece with the community and that community input is critical to kind of moving forward in this, in this project. I think that's what you need for the master planning, really to kind of have that, you know, what, what does the community as a greater whole, and not just the families and the schools, but the community, you know, all of those taxpayers, what do they see as, as a necessity for the schools, as being a hub for the communities in general?
Right, and the, the restrooms are unfortunately a really, uh, an unfortunate situation where we've gotten to where we are with these. Nothing's been done over the years, and now we're in a place to where there's a lot more focus on them, where even we have employees of the building, teachers, staff that are real uncomfortable even using them, and so we've gotten that feedback. So the functionality part of it, I'm not so sure it's real functional.
And even looking at kind of how they're spaced, I, you know, I don't know how you fit two people in the, to some of those spaces that we have, where, you know, it's, it's looking at kind of shifting even the makeup of them, which would even be more than just putting in a partition or wall, because you can't just put a wall in and see that it's going to fit, because physically, I don't know if people could fit in the spaces that are there. I think that's a, that's a challenge.
Now, has some of that been, I saw the ADA accessibility and some of the details in there, so you've addressed some of that?
We've addressed it to the point where, you know, the restroom should be renovated to become fully ADA accessible. We did not go down, that would say, you know, that would reduce the fixtures to X or.
Or how you do that, you know, that means either make them bigger or some of that item would be more.
Well, you were using the existing space.
Correct.
Obviously.
And, and is there, is there code in terms of what codes are, are like required to follow for certain numbers of, you know, toilets per people and that sort of thing? And if we, because I know kind of, the easy way is to go every other one and take a bunch out and just put the partitions in there and cap them off. But would we kind of be in a challenge at that point to not having enough units per people?
That is absolutely true, there is a code requirement based on the number of occupants in the facility. Um, so that would be a, a driving factor, that would say, yeah, you can't just take every other one out, but, you know, identifying the total number that you need and where are those opportunities then to.
Yeah, and once you start reaching a certain threshold of how much work you're doing, you're going to trigger some of those requirements versus, you know, if you're just going in and replacing the fixtures where they're at, you know, if you're low, you're still grand thundering, so you're going to have a little bit different situation there.
And then the more work, I know the more work we do in a building, then the more laws kick in, ADA compliance and those sorts of things. They start really looking at that, if we're really kind of like a complete overhaul versus a, um, kind of just doing a couple of small projects here and there.
So I'd just say that, you know, we have Buildings and Grounds Committee, which is actually meeting on Monday, and I, I think that's going to be, the bathroom situation's going to be on the, on the agenda for that. So we need to talk about that and see if there's something we can do perhaps short of what we're talking here a little bit more immediately.
And I, and looking at the reports, I mean, yes, we hear a lot about this building itself, but I don't think itself, it's, it's isolated to just this building. I think there are other facilities and other reports that we've seen, um, that we have the same issues that are there. So it's, it's a, it's a district, right? I think this has an immediate need, but I think there are others as well to kind of consider. So it may even be a larger scale project where maybe you get a discount because we're buying in bulk. And so, I don't know if that's a thing, but if you know what I'm saying.
And certainly, the initial hypothetical of this, you know, 70% of this, that's still not addressing the modulators and things like that. So if you had, say, 70 million to spend, I would think we would prioritize putting in modulars and putting solutions on as part of that piece, over some of the priority four and five things.
There's, there's still a space issue that, that would exist, especially with new, newer construction and plant developments. And obviously, we don't know where that development's going to go down the road and how it's going to build up. Can't tell you particularly, I've seen these great development plans that are phenomenal, and they're necessarily not to what they're supposed to be. Um, but this is an area that has a lot of land, there's a lot of space to grow, and we know that they're, that they're using them in for residential developments. I think we see them popping up, it's amazing where they're putting them, but they're just popping up all over the place. You can see the streets cut in, and here comes a new, a new home with them, you know, number home, which is great. But I think it also puts some challenges, you know, where we look to, look to make these kind of improvements.
And then the other, the other big issue too is just the logistics of doing these improvements, because we don't really have empty space for swing space, so, you know, summer's only about 11 weeks, by the time you get out to the time you come back in. So it's, what can you complete in that timeframe? And there's certain projects that will take more time than that. So then you're looking at, are we renting a facility somewhere, are we putting up a modular facility type of thing? And that adds cost to whatever project we are doing, but that's another consideration to do, how you logistically get it done.
I would also add that can construction costs be done? I mean, are they more expensive if we do them off hours? So if we say, yes, you can renovate the restrooms, for instance, but are you going to only do it, you know, second and third shift? That may have a significant increase instead of, you know, you have carte blanche access to the building.
To, to quote the great Thomas Sowell, "There are no solutions, there are only trade-offs."
That's absolutely.
So real quick, I want to ask, is there any other questions before we kind of move into making sure we level set at the table about what we think some of the priorities we have to consider as we start to figure out how do we move forward with building the facility plan?
I would just ask one short question, which is a, already somewhat have the answer, but would like to confirm it. With all of this information and knowledge, even talking about one stall, two stalls, when does the ADA compliance, you know, kick in? When is it not? All that sort of thing, we probably need a little more expertise of people that have done this. Again, getting, uh, whether it's a construction manager, an owner's agent, certainly just looking out for our interests. And, uh, I, I think that, I don't know how we can make that decision all by ourselves, I think we would need some expertise, would you agree?
Yeah, I, I think that's where, you know, we were trying to, to stretch the dollars and prioritize. Having a master plan exercise makes a lot of sense and really helps with that process, because that's going to incorporate a lot of those things. And you're going to go into it, sometimes you're going to think, these are all our priorities, and you're going to find out really, there's something else that you prioritize, sometimes there's not. Or it's going to look at things like swing space, it can look at, you know, timing, at, you know, when does this occur, when did this occur? So it really can help give you that blueprint, whether you follow it to the T or not, but at least it gets, gets something that's on paper that you've all gone through the process and, you know, can say, these are all we're prioritizing, this is how we're going to get to the end goal.
So it looks like we might be coming to an end, but I did want to say one other thing. I spent more time looking at the, at the Riverside and John R assessments. And I just wanted to, to point out that, that your observation is a tip of the hat to the maintenance department, where you said a lot of the equipment is beyond its expected life, but it's still going strong. So the, the maintenance here at Riverside, I think, has done a terrific job to keep things moving forward as, as best they can and, and sufficiently. And, and that's, a lot of people jump through hoops to make that happen, so.
And I think even through a time where there are a lot of challenges, right? Where the district was not, didn't have a lot of extra money, right, took out and support those things, so, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, so.
Yeah, I would definitely agree with that, absolutely.
Any other questions?
You did have some pronounced, by the way, I should have started with that, but, uh, of the cost matrix, I, I realize they're probably small, you know, eight and a half by 11, so we didn't blow those up to blow my sentence too much, we'll leave here. Perfect.
Thank you. All right, so what I thought would be great for us as a board to just kind of talk about, what are those things that we think are priorities, right? So obviously, we have this critical list of priorities, right, of just the, but we know there's things that aren't covered, like our, again, additional space, because I know something that's been on my mind, we left six modular units, possible growth. I know we have to think about additional space, I don't know if anybody would disagree with that, but at some point, we've got to go talk about it.
So I, from my observation, I, I mean, ideally, there would be construction in Riverside's future. Um, but I, I think the, from my assessment and my kind of view of the, of the, where we're at, based on certainly the last election cycle where we had a bond on, that I, I think that it would behoove the board to consider taking the money we have available now and applying it in a judicious way, and maybe even having some sort of a project tractor on our, on our website, saying, hey, you know, we have X number of dollars, here are our priorities, here's what we're doing, and then to demonstrate to the, the community, you know, we can execute and, and do what we said we're going to do.
Yeah, and I guess I'm not talking, I think we have to do it today. I'm saying, in general, one of the long-term things we've got to think about is space. At some point, yeah.
Right, and I agree with you. I mean, so, but I, I, you know, it's, it would behoove us in the long term not to have modular units, there's no doubt.
Is there anything else top of mind that, anybody, like those kind of ideas, like long-term, we're not talking about tomorrow, we're talking about, what are some of those top of mind things that we have to think about as we plan?
So for me, I'm a, I'm a data person, so when I look at this information and I look at all this, this data, right, like that speaks volumes to me, but I would like to matrix it out even more granularly than that and say, what are my year ones, what are my, my year one to, one to two? What are my three to fives, what are my five to sevens, what are my seven to tens? And then start prioritizing those and say, what are, like, what are my critical needs in year one to three? These are the things we absolutely have to do, because you're saying these are the most important things if they're in year one to three.
What we did, I tried to do through, is in each of these, kind of show that timeframe? So hopefully that's there to help, help you, I know that's the beginning of you.
Right, and for, for me, this is, this is like how, how I feel like, what are my priorities for the Board of Education? I don't know yet, because I would like to see that as a matrix. I would like to see that, because that, for me, will say, okay, these are the critical things that all this data points to, and then layer on top of that, what are some of the other considerations that we feel like are important? Like space that you haven't even addressed, right? Like, is that going to take precedence over critical one, right? Like where is that going to layer in? And I think, for me, I have to see all of that layered, right?
I, I would agree, I think for me, when I, when I read these, I, I think of number one, you know, priority one, I think a warm, safe and dry. You know, and I, I know we can use that as a, but what do we need to do to make sure that our buildings that are currently, say, are safe to continue, that, that the systems continue to work and we don't have a major catastrophe where we have to, you know, have something that we have in plan, some unforeseeable emergency, we kind of stay on top of that. Then I also think, I think the one thing really, these developed, the physical spaces, these physical spaces were developed for education 50, 60 years ago. So as, as an educate, as, as a community, as education, do these spaces fit what education looks like now? Do they allow for CTE opportunities? Do they allow for collaboration and cooperation? I think that's part of the spacing, that we even talk about a lot of spaces that are there, but do those spaces look the same? I think especially at our elementary, when you go to our two older and our two, our, versus the, versus the two, the brand new schools, what does that educational experience look like? And if we're saying that every K through five, fifth grader has some of that unique, you know, the somewhat similar experience, do they truly have that similar experience in Parkside as they do in Buckeye? And our, their teachers are phenomenal, they're the same kind of, you know, would they use the, they reach for the same curriculum, but is the space itself? limiting into the type of education that is provided? And are there different opportunities in different places? Because there's just more space and there's more of it. I think of a common music classroom, I think of kind of common specials, I think of some of the other opportunities that are available with a separate gym versus a gymneteria. And I kind of wonder what those look like and can some of those be addressed in that long-term plan as we move on? Because I think the one thing to try to avoid is the, well, you just went to this school. Because I remember when we had the six individual schools and being on with the Alcindor, everyone had a different flavor to it and it was great, but it was also a challenge because they came from different places. It would kind of cure that gap from a curriculum standpoint, but I think the next step is from a facility standpoint and a building resources standpoint, are we addressing that in our plan? I think that's a key too because it's not just about these spaces being suitable, it's about are these spaces adequate for what we need educationally? And I think that's a big key. And then I would also go to the last is, you know, what do we value as a community? And I can't say enough of any of these projects as kind of putting through as, yes, we need to show the money that we're spending and the current money that we have, but I would also say that we'd be, we missed an opportunity. We didn't say, we also hear you, that this is what you value as well, and this may not be a priority one, but this is priority one for your heart, and this is priority one for the community. And those things also, you know, go back to the bathrooms. It's not priority one anywhere in there, but I think it's, we're all pretty much sure it's priority one, or pretty high up there. So it's one of those where, how do we address that? And how do we address that in a linear time in a short summer with limited supply and supply chain issues and everything else? And what does that look like? And that's, that's the challenge of this.
So some of the things I've heard, I've heard systems, I've heard space, whether it's new or adequate, changing, I've heard safety, community values, those are some of the key things, like I think on top of mine, I don't know. Ms. Harden, do you have anything else? Mr. Fishel?
Yeah, I think we need organization. I think we need someone of knowledge who's been through this process. And I think we need to sit down so that we can take all these, not necessarily all of them, but there's a lot of moving parts and how do they come together? And how can we make a picture that's acceptable to everyone or almost everyone involved so that we have an agreement in moving forward? And I think that that eliminates missteps and wasting time and money and efficiency effectiveness of money. It's absolutely imperative that we have someone that's been through this process that we can sit down with and start to itemize. What are we going to do? When are we going to do it? How much money does it take? Now, secondarily, but almost firstarily, Mr. Pleco, with our permanent improvement money that we have on hand right now and with some other possible monies, I know we had talked about this a half a year ago, but how much do you think that can be leveraged? I know when we spoke before, you said maybe up to 28 million. Where do you think we are today?
That'd be, 28 million would be a stretch.
That'd be a stretch.
That depends on different options. So, for example, the permanent improvement levy is a continuous levy, it's 2.5 million levy, they collect around 2.6, 2.7 million a year. We can do one-up borrow, just called a tax anticipation note, that can be a 10-year borrowing, we could borrow for 50% of the PI fund. So let's just say 12, 13 million can be raised in that way. Now that ties up your PI fund for the next 10 years, and we still buy buses, Chromebooks and other things out of that fund. There's another type of borrowing called certificates of participation, and that's a different type of borrowing that we could do more longer term than a 10-year thing. That, we can do 20 or 30 years on that piece. We can probably get higher than 12 million, but there's costs associated with that, and we have to kind of dig in deeper what that is. You can do that against your PI fund, you can do that against your general fund, you know, just straight up through a borrowing of a general obligation debt. There's debt limitations that we're subject to, and you don't get very far with that type. So there's different ways we can go about doing it. We also be cognizant of, you know, we don't want to leverage too much in entire hands for 10 years of other improvements or things like that. So we have to kind of be careful with what we want to do, and it's kind of like the chicken and egg thing. Do these improvements drive the funding? Is the funding going to drive the improvements? Because, you know, without going back to taxpayers for additional funding, there's only so much we can work with. And we know, one of the things I've, you know, we know with the, we have razzles coming up, there could be an increase due to that, is, you know, if that's the case, is there a way to leverage that as well for our facilities and some of that?
Well, we obviously wouldn't want to do 100%. We would figure 70, 80% with some room to operate, things that would, necessary needs, right, school buses or otherwise. And any additional monies that might be coming in, we might just not count on that, but appoint it to things that cost more than expected, possibly. And so what I'm hearing you say is, maybe we would be a little bit more comfortable around the $15 million range.
I would say, yeah.
Now, would that be on top of the 6 or 7 million we have in the bank right now?
Yeah.
Yeah. So really, we'd be around 21, 22 million that we could start to work with in a sense if we were looking at that option and opportunity, possibly. And just so everyone here knows, that's no new taxes to the public, that's all operating inside the Board of Education and the school district.
I think part of that, though, goes back to, once we do that, now we have nothing left to leverage. Right, you can't do it again two years from now to fund additional projects in tier two or tier three in your critical needs. Now you have nothing left. So I think that's important to factor into that.
Right, that's all true. And you definitely, as I think Mr. Fishel alluded to, you don't want to tap out your, all the income you're getting on an annual basis from the permanent improvement. You want to have part of that supporting debt service, but you want to have some, some free money to address some of the concerns you're talking about. But as Thomas Sowell said, there are no solutions, there are only trade-offs. And it would seem to me that if we were able to utilize the 21, 22 million dollars and make significant improvements within the district, that it's not perfect, but it's a trade-off, that we are making progress overall in the district. And if there are other things that need to be done, well, you know, there are obviously going to be more projects than we have money for in any circumstance, right? We're never going to have, we're not going to be able to fully fund what has been done in the, what we received. So.
And things don't get any cheaper. Is there a way that they're going to be able to update this sort of on a, I don't want to say annual basis, but by the time 2024 rolls around, that's six months from now, and we're utilizing 2024 costs, right, summer 2024, we won't get to any of it for 2024.
I mean, knowing the value.
I was about to say that. It's going to be 2025.
It's going to be 2025, 2026.
Knowing the value that each of these has and knowing that it's based off of 2024 construction number, yes, I think each of those could be, you know, calibrated to whatever calendar you're, you know, you're looking for. Now, obviously, if you're projecting that in the future, there's a little bit of a guessing game of what that percent shall be.
Could you pick a number like maybe 5 to 7%? If things are starting to level out, hopefully maybe 5 to 7%?
Yeah, I have to look and, I can't remember what the inflation rate has been that we're...
We can certainly ask our estimate and see what they might, you know, think, but I mean...
So there's two different numbers, right? It's what they're telling us it is and what's real, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's what they're seeing, what they're projecting, you know, and it's, you know, they're, they have a little more expertise for forecasting out than we do.
Yeah. Just one small item, they were telling us inflation was 7, 8%, and over two years, things were up 30% in reality. Okay, so that's 7, 8%. Well, you were doubling that in the field. Again, I'm in the roofing industry and EPDM, okay, commercial industrial roofing. I was paying $1,100 for a 20-foot by 100-foot roll, now I'm paying 19, okay? A five-gallon pail of bonding in the piece of two and a half years ago was $100, now it's $200. That's not 7 or 8%. So what do you do? Hopefully, hopefully that's leveling off, and what I'm seeing is the increases are slowing down. But I think I would probably, you know, put a 5 to 7% number on that and project out some numbers for five years. It's just a thought. It's all an opinion. Who's ever going to be right?
All right. Anything else top of mind, things that we want to, just from the board, say that are kind of on our mind, things that we have to think about as we start to organize a plan?
I would just say, I think one of the things is the longer, I think, I think time is of the essence with some of this, and I think kind of reading is a priorities type thing and really kind of digging in and saying, what are our priorities? What will the district look like in 15, 10 to 15 years? What do we want to see the district look like? And how do we kind of maintain these facilities? Because the longer we wait, not only does it get more expensive, but it also deteriorates more. And I think that's the other thing to kind of think of is, and the environment, like, I look at the high school roof replacement. You know, it's $8 million estimated for this year for that project, which is priority number one, and that's, that's a big chunk of change, and that kind of eats everything up. And, but then it's also down the road, if something else were to happen, is it $8 million plus the cost of the fix because something else happened, you know, in the meantime along the way? And I think that's kind of one of the things to really say, these are things that we need to move with, and those are things that can be done, you know, kind of on that priority type schedule if you think this is an important one. And we start to kind of really to bid that out. But then also, when you're looking at $20 million and taking eight of it for a roof, and that doesn't impact teaching or learning, that doesn't, you can't see, you know, no one sees the roof. But it's, it's other than, you know, Mr. Hack when he's in the high school.
Using a storm key.
Right. But just so, you know, I think that the principal's pretty small, it's 3.8 million.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So it's not, I mean, it's still significant, but it's half that, at least according to what I've found.
And so, let me add, let me add to that also, there are other options.
It's 3.8, yeah.
So let me add to that, there are other options, as I'm in the industry, I'm aware of this. That 3.8 number, in my opinion, can be cut in half, okay? There are, there are products out there that will give you a 20-year roof where you're not tearing off the existing roof and you're layering over it, and it meets code. And so there are opportunities to cut some of these costs. As part of why I was asking that, if you, if your life depended on it and you were, could do it, you had to do it with 70%, are there other options? So I'm just saying that there's, there are ways to cut the costs, there are ways to have a fully functional system that gives you a 20-year life, and it can cut the costs significantly. So that's at least some of the knowledge I bring to the table.
So the next question, kind of moving forward for the board, I don't know, Mr. Hack, as your last Buildings and Grounds committee meeting is coming up, I don't know if you want to take what you've heard here today and work on what?
The last hurrah on Monday.
Right, last hurrah on Monday. So I, I would say, I mean, I don't have any, you know, huge insights, other than when, when we were building the elementary schools, Buildings and Grounds became the focal point of kind of the, it wasn't day-to-day, but it was, it was the in-depth review of what was going on. And I definitely would think that Buildings and Grounds would continue to do that. I do think that having a, either a owner's rep or some sort of a contract manager that works for us and would help us oversee would be critical, and that person would need to attend that Buildings and Grounds meeting. But I do think that that was very useful. I don't know if I'd say critical, but, well, I think it was extremely useful, bordering on critical, that allowed us to have a, okay, so we have a critical.
When we were going through that new bill, I, yeah.
So I do think that Buildings and Grounds is going to be a key committee for, you know, the next 10 years and the way we're, the way things are spaced out. But that's, is that, was that what you were looking for?
Yeah, I was asking if you guys want to take that away in your meeting on Monday, kind of discuss, maybe come back to the board meeting the next week, tell us, know if you have any ideas on kind of the next steps moving us forward.
Who did you consider that to be when you were building, I wasn't on Buildings and Grounds when we were doing the elementarys. Was that from Icon? Was it, because we didn't use our owner's rep.
Our owner's rep was not a very good, was not a traditional owner's rep, I'll say it that way.
So...
So it was Chris, easily.
Easily, yeah. But you're the project manager.
Right, right. And so we, that was, that was our contact point, and it was just, it was, it was an excellent way of keeping, and at that point, Mr. Miley and I, up to speed on what was going on and what the issues were, and, and help keep things prioritized. And by virtue of that, I, you know, I was able as the chair to keep the board more apprised of what was going on. But I do think that, that we're not going to be in the same situation, so we're going to need a Chris, easily?
Easily, yeah.
A Chris easily, but not, because we're not going to have Icon.
We don't have construction going on right now.
Right. And so we're going to need to hire somebody else. And I don't know if, you know, we would certainly look for input and recommendations, but we need to figure out what that looks like. And we would be looking for a long-term relationship, right? We don't want, we would want to have continuity in that regard. That could be a position that's more, has more continuity than perhaps, you know, things go through changes, right? So that, having somebody who had the long-term potential, no guarantees, but had the long-term potential to be with us would be very important to the long-term success of the various things we have going on.
Right, so we would want someone local and someone who's done it before. I mean, that's kind of simple, right?
Yeah.
And I would say, not just done it, but done it with success.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, that's going to save us time and money and headaches if we're just more organized and we have a clear picture. We identify, okay, these are the things we want to do over the next two years. What can we get done right away and start knocking them over? And then we look at the time constraints, school's in, school's not in, can you do it then? Can you not? All that sort of thing. But we want to start knocking things over so they don't drag on and cost us more money later. Things we can get done now, let's just get them done, right? So that person that can understand all of that, I think, would be helpful.
Right. And I definitely think there's, there's got to be some things that we can execute in 2024. They may not be the big-ticket items, but there have got to be some things that, that if we can't completely execute, we can at least get the ball rolling so that we are executing as we can in the 24, 25 school year.
Just right off the top, anything that's exterior walls or anything like that, you can do anytime, right? So all that sort of thing, as soon as the weather's warming up, you can knock those things out.
Well, again, I think that's just based on what the priorities of...
If the weather's warming, we're testing in April, so like, that's not a good time to be making, knocking the buildings down.
Well, I'm just, I'm just saying, so if you're looking at working as, as the days are longer and school's out, and if you're looking at working four till nine o'clock or something, you can get a lot done in that timeframe and also on weekends. And again, I'm in that industry, and sometimes you have to work around people's schedules, and you just do what it takes to get it done.
Well, I also think too, even if we started later, going into August would be a little bit easier than even starting, you know, and we could go into the start.
Again, you pick out what you want to knock over and you knock them out and plan for it, right?
Yeah, it's all speculation at this point, but we definitely, step number one, I think, would be to identify somebody we have the potential of working with longer term to help be that continuity and that expertise that we don't necessarily have in-house.
Well, I would say also that the idea that master's facilities plan and really looking at what that vision is, is key too.
And I'd look through that, that person to have, I mean.
Yes, to have some of that, but to organize through the engagement piece and not just the loudest, but the majority of the communities. And the other thing that we don't hear enough of from, I would say all the time, is the non-school resident. The resident who doesn't send their students to Riverside or who sends their students to other schools where these schools are, I will give, the Turf Build, for example, that, the Turf is used all the time, and I would say everyone thinks it's a great investment because there's a lot of athletes, a lot of families, a lot of community members that are on it. What else does our community want in terms of their facilities? So if we are looking to go with new money and build new, what are some of the aspects that they might want in a new facility that they may not want to send their children to school here, but they, they can see themselves using and seeing the value for them?
Yeah, I think anybody we consult with should represent our district, right, and what our district looks like. So absolutely. So I guess I'm still looking for clear direction to kind of make sure we walk away here with a next step. I guess, Dr. Tino and, go ahead.
I heard two, two priorities, right? It's the, it's the, we have to establish a master plan, and we need to hire an owner's rep of some sort. I think those are the two most important next steps that we need to accomplish. Did, does anybody hear anything different? Mr. Olaski?
Arlessa.
Thank you. Thank you. Only known you for like five years now.
Can you send that in an email, please?
So any, any, any other steps that you would see that, besides just trying to establish an owner's rep and a, and a master plan, is there anything else that you would view as a, is a, on the same par as a priority initially out of the gates?
From my experience, is something that gets overlooked a lot is you lose focus on sustainability. You're looking to fix the classrooms or fix the bathrooms or fix the sporting facilities or the technology, but then you're letting other items go to the waysides. Case in point, we have two new schools, they're going on five years old. You have to remember, we're going to spend $10 million to fix something, but what are we going to have in the pot to maintain it? Because then you're just going to put yourself right back into the situation where you now have a 40-year-old school that is falling apart because you didn't have the funding to maintain it to the level you wanted to maintain it for your community and your students and your teachers because you're trying to fix something else. So that also needs to always be on the horizon and in your focus as to, we're going So, that also needs to always be on the horizon and in your focus as to, we're going to fix, but we also need to maintain and have that money to maintain while we're doing that project.
Right. So, maybe on Monday at the Buildings and Grounds, we can talk about what, you know, we can try to gain out how much of the Buildings and, the permanent improvement levy we're going to need for that, the point you just brought up, versus what we would feel comfortable with allowing to be leveraged for, you know, for more fundamental updates in other buildings.
Carrie, I have a question on that note. We used OFCC funding or we used the local partnership program to fill those facilities. Part of that program is that when you go out for bonds, you have to have X dollars of permanent improvement, right? Because that's why a lot of districts have to go out for money for permanent improvement. At the same time, they go out for the bond levy because you have to have X dollars. Are we going to have to, like, keep some of our money aside? Because we didn't have to do that because we already had it.
Right. Well, basically, we had to set aside a half mil or PI levy.
Right. So, if we start.
Once we qualify for the facility plan, because we use the expedited plan, so we don't have to designate that. But I mean, we had to say we're going to set aside this half mil towards that, but we don't have to actually do that until our number comes up on the list.
So, when we're talking about leveraging our PI, right? When we're talking about currently now leveraging PI money to borrow, do we have to set it aside and say, hey?
We probably have to.
Right? If my, if my PI is three, do I have to, I can only use two, two and a half to, right? Do you know what I mean? There would be a question because that's a.
I don't understand, so I'm not familiar with that. So, we'd only have to put a half, one mil of that in the bank? I'm not sure what that means.
Basically, there's a, whenever you're in an OFCC type of project and you've qualified for what they call CFAP, which is special facilities, I forget the exact name, it's called CFAP. When your name gets, when your number gets up to that list, we have to set aside a half mil of our PI levy to be used towards those facilities that were constructed under OFCC rules. Because we're in the expedited local partnership program, we jumped ahead and did the projects. We'll get credit, but we don't have to put that money aside until our name comes up on the list, which may not be for another 10 years, but when we get to that point, we have to make sure.
Didn't you say you were retiring? You were looking at maybe 20, 39?
39, yes.
Yeah. So, I'm wondering, what's going to happen first?
Well, it's just like, right? Like, that's just like with Haynesville and whatever, they built their school. They actually had to put, they had to put money on the ballot for PI because they didn't have that. And they were getting money.
There were some of those first schools who built all these new schools.
They were getting the money.
Couldn't afford to operate.
Right.
So, that's why they put that out there, because they were building all these great new schools, and then they couldn't afford to occupy.
Or to keep them maintained, right?
Which is kind of a weird rule with the OFCCs, it's based on half mil. Well, a half mil for us generates a lot more money than a half mil for Haynesville. So, why, I don't understand the logic of why it has to be a half mil, but that's, that's.
Bottom line is, it's, it doesn't apply today. We don't know when it's going to apply. But it will potentially apply in the future whenever we, you know, who can, who knows when that will end up on that list.
But for sure, it's not going to be in two, three, or four years.
Right.
Yeah. It's going to be a while.
Yeah.
All I'm saying is if we're locking up our funds for 10, 12 years, we need to think about it. That's a long-term possibility. We can't, we can't overextend if that possibility is going to come up. We are no, our name might get called tomorrow.
Right. And so, to that point, that's why we were talking about like maybe 70%. So, we want to be prudent, right?
So, again, those are all going to be discussed, I think, at another time, all things they keep in mind. I guess I'm still at the point, Dr. Tito, Mr. Placo, do you guys have, what do you need from us to say, kind of, here's where we're going next?
To me, it sounds like to get someone on board for a master or facility planning, we're basically hiring another architect firm to start that process. Typically, the ones who do those things, they have a role right into we're doing certain projects, and they would help us with those projects. So, basically, we had to cover our requests for qualifications, get, propose, get the, those statements from different firms that are interested in applying, and we'd rank them based on the top three firms and negotiate a contract where we rank as the top firm. We kind of went through this process in 2016. We hired Panning Howie, and 2018 was when we hired TDA. So, we kind of be doing that process again, but then the facility planning would be not, they had finished following the OFCC formula before. We would move differently this time because we're not necessarily following that method.
Yeah. And certainly, before we get there, we want to have someone sit down, get community involvement, feedback, and organize our information and start to put together that ball away so we know where we're headed.
And lots of times, those firms will facilitate that.
We wait for that, we're going to be six months down the road.
I wouldn't say any of that. I mean, you put up the RFQ, let's say, December, January, you'd have, you'd have a firm, you know, usually put it off two, three weeks. You'd have, because they have boilerplate, they submit, they throw their experience out, and then, you know. So, I have to think like by February, maybe March, the latest, we'd have someone on board.
So, what I'm looking at is before we hired NV5, right? We had NV5 in Cleora and looking at it as an owner's agent to protect our interests. But also, part of what they do is they get information from the community, get everyone together, and start to look at the list of what the priorities are and start to say, hey, this makes sense. What do you, what do you want to do? And then, okay, yeah, that's a good idea, but it doesn't make sense because of this and this. Maybe we want to adjust it. We really need to get that process going if we want to start to get some work done. We need that first thing.
But I think that we'd have to put out the bid also. So, it's the same thing, whether it's the architect.
Well, it's got to go out to bid, right?
Right. So, whether it's the architect that comes in and does it, that we're putting out the bid as part of that contract or it's somebody else, the both of them have to go out the bid. The one's going to get started.
They have all the specs, so it's, it's not a quick.
So, are you expecting the architect would be the owner's agent?
Usually, they're separate.
That's what I'm saying. Okay. So, just so everyone understands, it's usually a separate person. We need that person to work closely with us to take care of our interest. Otherwise, we're going to, we're going to spend money we don't need to spend.
That would be a second RFQ then for the owner's agent, and then one for the architect.
Yeah.
Yeah. But just like we did basically do a couple years ago.
So, you guys are sitting there and we're talking. Do you have anything to add to what we just said?
I think that makes sense, what you said in terms of a logical kind of next steps. I think, you know, having a master plan put together based on all these recommendations, community input, it makes a lot of sense.
Yeah. You just sum it up, well, you'd have to do the own RFQ or a rep RFQ for the master planning piece, and then they work together with you throughout the process. We originally had a master plan in 2015 or 16 under the group, I think it was 15, that we put together with the community, which was to build the elementary schools and do the 16th and 12th campus. Then when we brought, you know, we used Panning Howie for the first phase, decided to go a different direction for phase two. Did our, we already had a plan in place, was more of continuing that plan. TDA was ultimately hired for the second phase. We did some educational visioning, we had some input from students and parents and staff, those things. That's kind of said, what do you want to see in a new facility type of thing? But that plan is already kind of set, and now we're kind of back to what's the actual plan again.
We don't put the original plan together. We did not, yeah, somebody.
We did it in-house.
We did it in-house.
Yeah. There wasn't a, there wasn't a rep involved that was kind of sitting in-house and show up and keep.
You had the facilities assessment done by OFCC.
Oh, yeah. The facilities assessment done, but then the visioning was just a lot of volunteers and people who kind of came up. But they were, again, they were, they were the parents and not necessarily.
It was a core group. We probably had about 30 people in there.
We actually, at one point, we had a community.
We had a group over at the house.
We were at the, yeah.
The historical center.
Yeah. Historical center, yeah.
So, is that a process, again, that you guys would suggest? I didn't go through it. So, is that a process you would suggest repeating, or the owner's rep is definitely the way to go?
I would actually want somebody to facilitate it.
Okay.
Not that it was, not that it wasn't done thoroughly, but I just feel like, at this point in time, I feel like we've got so much data.
If you've done this, you can kind of look in the community, reach out to the community as well to kind of see where we're at and who have done other things. Because I think really getting that, that input and that piece to it is so critical to a project like this and really kind of finding those, and even going out. And I would like to see, and then our just going out to other places, you know, not just bringing everybody here, but where are we going to go to kind of get engagement that's out there? And what are some non-traditional ways to kind of get that engagement? What are we looking for? And looking at what other districts, neighborhood initiatives have done to their facilities to really make them hubs of the community. And I think the WILs, like, and what they've done with their, with their junior high schools. And then how they built that and how they, yeah, when Laclede is a community center, how they tied in with, they partnered with the Y. They partnered with local community theater partnerships at North, the Y is at South, the Senior Center. Those kind of things that really are kind of out of the box, but I really think that's where we're at. I mean, that's how we teach our kids of that out-of-the-box mindset, like, we need to just have a building. That's a kind of atmosphere on the same day.
Is this a plucky situation?
It is, but we need a lot of pluckiness to get through this. But that's, but that's what Riverside's known for. We are plucky. It's, we're very plucky, and we'll figure it out. We will, we will take all the things that come at us, and we will figure out the best solution that's right for Riverside and our community, and we will do great things.
So, real quick, I know you're leaving us. Do you have any comments? You're going to be sitting up here on the board in a month, right? So, any comments or any thoughts?
No. I thought that this was very thorough. I think that the priority ones and twos obviously need attention. It's just you have to keep an eye on what's your future plan and where do you want to invest your money? And what's that going to look like later? So, those are discussions.
Simple job, right?
Yeah. But I've been brainstorming here.
I didn't mean to put you in a spot, but I wanted.
Oh, not that your opinion is not.
Well, no. My, like, everybody else, we're all temporary, and I'm more temporary than most.
All right. So, it sounds like you're comfortable with what we're asking at this point?
I think we have some from our.